Good evening, everyone. Thank you for coming, and for those of you watching, we appreciate your joining us. We'll call the meeting to order. And Mr. Martin, if you would please do the invocation and Pledge of Allegiance.
Sure.
Heavenly Father, we're just grateful for the blessings and the provisions that you provide in our lives, the fact that you watch over us as individuals, and that you care for us individually, and that you have a plan for us individually. It's just awestruck and a wonder to know. Lord, we ask that you also watch over our first responders here locally, and watch over our leadership here in the county, and at the state, and at the federal government. And, Lord, just a special shout-out tonight that you watch over Israel, protect her, be with her people, watch over that conflict, help bring it to a resolution quickly and peacefully, in Jesus' name, amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, sir. We'll begin tonight with public hearings and action, and the first item is a proposed text amendment to the UDO. Go ahead, Matt, please.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and Town Council. Wait for my slides to pull up here and we'll get started. As you just said, tonight is a proposed text amendment. I apologize for that heading, that should be for the UDO, for everyone who's following along, Section 10.24, which is headed signs not requiring a permit. This is not the right PowerPoint.
This isn't the right, yeah.
Apologize for that. Well, we don't need a PowerPoint, I can walk you through without it. This is pretty straightforward in this instance. So, the town has several events and programs at local parks here. When we were looking at our signed ordinance, we did have an allowance for town to place signs in the right-of-way, but we didn't have an allowance for town, the town to put temporary signs actually on-town on property. So, town staff looked at that ordinance and decided to initiate a text amendment to allow temporary non-commercial signage to be placed on-town on property for town programs and events, town-sponsored events. The Planning Board reviewed this recommendation at the September 26 meeting, and the Planning Board voted unanimously to recommend Town Council approve the amendment, finding that it's consistent with the adopted plans of the town, as well as reasonable in the public interest. The proposed amendment would create a new subsection in that ordinance, 10.24.5.12, which would allow commercial, non-commercial, temporary signage, including feather flags, to be placed at Middleton and Veterans Park for town-sponsored events, if approved by the town manager. So, our comprehensive land use plan outlines several actions related to implementing a unified development ordinance, including increasing town staff approvals and creating a simpler, more flexible, and more easily administered document. In addition, staff feels that this proposed amendment is reasonable in the public interest because it allows a similar, we already have a provision for temporary signage for the town right-of-way, for the town to place those signs, this just extends that to other town on properties as well. As I mentioned, the Planning Board recommended approval, and staff's recommendation is to approve the proposed amendment and adopt the associated consistency statement. I'd be happy to try to answer any questions you might have.
Matt, is there a reason why this doesn't encompass any town property rather being restricted to Veterans Park and Middleton Park?
Well, this is the, this is, we started small, just because this is a new allowance. It certainly could be, if council wishes, could be amended, you could strike that section out and just say, "all-town on property," that'd be a pretty simple, a pretty simple amendment there.
Okay.
That, rather than having to have it come back, if you were, if there were to be other parks that were needed to?
Yeah.
Let's just make that amendment, whoever makes it.
Absolutely.
Thank you. Any other questions for Matt?
Just to this point, Matt?
Need to open the public hearing now for citizen comment?
Yes. No one side up for this public hearing?
Do we want to ask?
Does anyone here have comment or input on this hearing? All right, we're good to go.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Madam Clerk, please let the minutes reflect that no one indicated they wanted to speak, and we can go ahead and close the public hearing.
I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
Second?
Second.
All in favor? Unanimous.
Um, let's see. Hang tight. I'll make a motion to approve the proposed amended text amendment and adopt the associated consistency statement.
To include all of?
I said amended.
Amended, okay.
I'm sorry.
For clarification, we need to have it in writing, so could we just change, instead of "at Middleton and Veterans Park," just?
To be placed at all-town parks, if approved. Right.
Town property.
Town property.
Whichever, yes.
Okay.
I'll amend my motion.
Okay.
Any to read it back, please?
Sure. It's a motion to approve the proposed amendment as further amended by changing "at Middleton and Veterans Park" to "on-town property."
I'll second that.
That's fine. I just had another quick question. Since we're opening up to all-town property, the, so the pier, if we were to put something at the pier, and it says "non-commercial," the pier certainly isn't non-commercial.
We should be allowed to put it at the pier, if we wanted to put feather flags down.
I'm just wondering now if we should, if the word "non-commercial" is going to be an issue, since we're opening up to all-town property, like the pier or the 901 Center?
I believe that's referring to the type of sign, as opposed to the establishment or town property where the sign can go.
Yeah. So, we ourselves would not, how would we put a sign up that might support the pier, say, at the 901 Center? You see what I'm saying? Or is it just, you think it's just not going to be an issue?
I don't think it's going to be an issue.
Okay. All right, that's fine.
I mean, if that's where we were honoring veterans for Pearl Harbor, they usually do that at the pier. Just the sample. Any more discussion?
Just for clarification, Councilmember Bell, was your, did your motion include and the adoption of the accompanying consistency statement?
It did.
Thank you.
Motion on the floor, do we need it read again? Are we good? Is everybody with us? All in favor? Unanimous. Thank you very much. We move to presentations, placremations, and recognitions, and the first is a Tree to Sea Award. Mr. Kraft, do you want to go to the podium?
I'd be happy to. Come on, Sheila.
I'm following you, Bill.
Last year, the Town Council established the Trees to Sea Award. This is honoring our citizens who go above the norm in caring for, being active in, and being outstanding citizens. A little over eight years ago, Clarissa Cope had a vision to start a community outreach program called Oak Island Locals. All Angels, I'm sorry, Oak Island Angels. All year long, with the help of volunteers, family members, and friends, the Oak Island Angels help families in need. After fires, misfortune, and times of need, they are there. They are the first responders in caring in Oak Island. Meals at Thanksgiving, Christmas gifts for needy families, nursing home visits, on and on. Oak Island Angels. They have bake sales, garage sales, and receive donations whenever they can. Clarissa opened the Candy Girl Shop on Oak Island Drive. She is one of our town's treasures and a very caring and giving person. I'd like to ask Councilwoman Sheila Bell if she would present this award to Clarissa. And her angels. This award is presented by the Town of Oak Island on behalf of its residents in recognition of this individual's contributions to the Oak Island community, to honor their sustained or singular effort to go above and beyond in workings toward the betterment, promotion, or enhancement of the town and its residents. It went as whereof I ear unto, set my hand and call the seal of Town of Oak Island fixed 10 October 2023, S. Elizabeth White, Mayor.
Congratulations, Clarissa, and all of the angels, recognition well deserved. The next, Chief Morris, would you please introduce our guest from the Coast Guard? This is not in your agenda, by the way, this is an addition.
Good evening, Mayor, Town Council. Tonight, I would like to introduce the Senior Chief of the United States Coast Guard, Logan Atkinson, who was assigned to the Coast Guard Station on Caswell Beach. He's the highest-ranking officer there and runs their day-to-day operations. So, the Coast Guard and the Police Department, Fire Department, and the town has formed a relationship over the past year or so, where the Coast Guard has really supported us in our endeavors, and we are very appreciative of that relationship. So, tonight, Senior Chief has asked to come and address the council. So, thank you, thank you, sir, for coming tonight.
Mayor, Town Council, thank you for having me tonight, I appreciate it. And thank you, Chief, I appreciate the introduction. Thank you for allowing me a little bit of time to just speak about the Coast Guard here in Oak Island. I'll be quick, because I was in addition, sorry about that.
No worries.
But, yeah, so the Coast Guard is stationed right here in Oak Island on Caswell Beach. We've got a crew of 43 active-duty at the, at the search and rescue station, and 65 with our reservists included. And then, we also have a small unit right next door to us on the same property, and that is the AIDS-to-Navigation Team. So, altogether, we've got around 80 folks in the United States Coast Guard stationed right here in Oak Island. I am the officer in charge, like Chief said, Logan Atkinson. I've been in the Coast Guard for 21 years now, and I am, I'm really proud to be stationed right here in Oak Island, it's a great place. And just a few weeks ago, Chief, during the 9/11 memorial, said something about how important it is to develop a team. And I'm really proud to say that we've, I think we've done a pretty good job of developing a team. Our folks at the station, along with Chief Morris and his folks, and Chief Price with the Fire Department, we work well together. We've got great relationships, and we're really thankful that we've got those partnerships, because obviously, if we ever find ourselves in a situation where there is an emergency, we know that we can seamlessly communicate with Chief Price or Chief Morris and find a quick resolution. We also work closely with Oak Island Water Rescue, and they've been a great resource. And so, just a very brief explanation of what we do, it would take me all day to really say what the entire Coast Guard does, but right here in Oak Island, we do search and rescue, mostly in navigable waterways, and so that would be offshore out to 50 nautical miles, well beyond frying pan tower, and then up the river to Wilmington on the New Hanover and Brunswick side, and then all the way to the state line on the ICW. And so, that is our area of responsibility, but we're located right here in Oak Island. And so, water rescue and, and law enforcement in those areas is our primary responsibility. So, again, those partnerships are critical. We also have an MOU with the Fire Department that we can, we can take a crew over to Baldhead in the event that they need additional support for a fire on Baldhead, because they don't have a ton of resources over there as far as people, they've got public service folks, so, the police, fire, and EMS. And so, to supplement, we give a ride to the Fire Department after hours to get over there to Baldhead to assist. But, in short, I think, I think the main point that I wanted to bring up is, is the support from the community is top-notch. Again, I've been in for 21 years, and I don't know that I've ever had as close of a relationship as I have here in Brunswick County with all of our partners anywhere. And, you know, it's, it's just small enough that we can communicate on a pretty regular basis, but big enough that we've got a ton of resources in this area, and I'm really proud to be a part of that. And so, I thank you for, both of you, for what you've done. And then, Mayor, the town has been such a blessing to my family, and it's, it's a great place to live, and we're really, really happy to be around Oak Island. And I, I want to just thank the community as well and say, you know, that, that we're there if, if, if you ever need the Coast Guard, hopefully you don't need us in an emergency, but we're there if you need us, and we've got a great relationship with, with the locals. We've also got a softball game coming up, I don't know if anybody's heard about it, but we're going to be doing a softball game with, against the Police and Fire Department on Friday evening, I think it's at 6 o'clock, right, Chief? So, at 6 o'clock, we're going to be playing against the Police and Fire Department in a friendly softball match, we'll see how friendly it is, but we're excited about that, and those are some of the things that, that are bringing those relationships closer. So, thank you again, I appreciate the time.
Senior Chief, thank you for talking tonight, we appreciate all that you do, both officially, and also, we very much appreciate your taking part in all of the Oak Island events, and particularly the ceremonies. Your presence is always welcome.
Thank you, Mayor, appreciate it.
Thank you, Senior Chief.
Yes, sir.
Where is the softball game?
Softball game will be at Middleton Park.
Middleton Park.
Right, right over here, right down the street, Friday night.
Do us proud, do us proud.
Oh, I don't know, I don't know if we have one. I'm sure we can recruit.
Need one.
Thank you, Mayor.
Next on the agenda is a presentation from the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers, and I would like to ask for an amendment to modify the agenda to consider a, an agreement at the conclusion of your presentation.
I will so move.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
We're adding an action item, potential action item. Presentation.
I was told that the consideration would include action, but is that understood, Council? It would include action? Thank you.
Thank you. Madam Mayor, Town Council, members of the community, my name is Coley Cordero, I work for the Army Corps of Engineers as a Civil Works Project Manager. I am the primary project manager for the Town of Oak Island on the CSRM project, have here with me Bob Kiesler, he is the Chief of Programs and Project Management. So, I'll go through the kind of overview, brief presentation, and then kind of pause for any questions that you may have before we proceed tonight.
So, Ms. Coley, could you watch the acronyms? Not everyone is familiar, so.
Absolutely. And I'm happy to, please stop me at any time and make sure I spell out any acronyms that you may see. CSRM, coastal storm, right, right off the top, right?
Right.
Coastal Storm Risk Management, CSRM.
Thank you very much.
So, right at the top here of the agenda, we'll just do a project overview, Coastal Storm Risk Management feasibility study, and going in more detail about the purpose, scope, schedule, budget, and the upcoming actions that we have for this study, and then pause for any questions you may have. So, with the project overview, we are looking for measures that can reduce impacts from sea level rise, storm surge, you know, for properties within the Town of Oak Island. And the intent really is to reduce flood, flood risk and create a community resilience as a result of this study. The feasibility study purpose, what you kind of see in the box there is the authorization for why we are here today at this point, I've been looking for a period of 50 years for the FCSA, or for the CSRM, excuse me, the Coastal Storm Risk Management feasibility study. The intent here is to determine the federal interest for the Coastal Storm Risk Management study for the period of 50 years. This is a reformulation study, basically just trying to summarize that, the intent is for, to reanalyze, or reanalysis of information that was provided or completed in the previous study, and, and doing that using the current criteria that we have with the Army Corps of Engineers. So, the recommended plan must be technically feasible, economically justified, and environmentally acceptable. These are just a few of the things in the study's scope, but just to provide you at least a few of the pieces of information that we intend to include in the scope, reformulate the existing project, as I just mentioned, update the project costs and benefits, validate the project parking and access, confirm adequacy of the borrow sources, address potential sea level rise, and confirm environmental compliance. Included in that will be a risk analysis. This is the tentative schedule, and until we actually have a signed FCSA and funding available, this schedule is, is tentative. It is a draft schedule, but it, it does kind of give you a good representation of what we're looking at with a three-by-three, what the Corps calls a three-by-three study, being $3 million for three years to complete the study. So, we have study initiation, hopefully very soon here in the month of October 2023, and the first milestone that we have internally in the Corps is the AMM, being the Alternative Milestone Meeting. So, that's what you see at the first step here, the Alternative Milestone, being January of 2024. The intent of that meeting is really just to confirm our scope, schedule, and budget, and make sure that we have vertical team alignment and reviewing the risks associated with the study. You see, moving forward in year two, we have the next step, major step, milestone in the, in the study being the, what we call the tentatively selected plan, referred to as the TSP, the Tentatively Selected Plan. It really is kind of a detailed plan that we would provide, or intend to provide to Congress for authorization. Following that, we have in September of 2025, the release of a draft report. At that time, we will be sure to, we'll continue to do presentations for the Town of Oak Island, but that is really kind of our, our, our point where we have a draft report in place, we have, we will take that to internal and external reviewers, being state and federal, other federal government entities, and reviewing the draft report, and also making sure that we get feedback from the Town of Oak Island. Following the release of the draft report in September of 2025, we have in January of 2025, an agency decision, so that is at that point where the Army Corps of Engineers will make a decision on whether or not to move forward with the selected plan that we have, and that decision will occur in January of 2025. Then you see a final report and study completion, final report being June of 2026, and the intent is that, at that point, the report will be sent to Washington, D.C. for review and approval. When I said earlier, three-by-three, so three, one of those threes is three years, the other three is $3 million, so the intent is for the federal government to provide 1.5 million, and the non-federal entity, non-federal sponsor in this case being the Town of Oak Island, to provide 1.5, getting to the $3 million for the cost of the study. Last but not least here, we have the tentative upcoming actions, and some of the discussion today being the feasibility cost-share agreement, so the intent would be to have that agreement signed by 19 of October. The town has been provided, provided the final draft of the FCSA, being the feasibility cost-share agreement for review. The next step then would be to receive funds, and then hold our first public information meeting within the first 12 months of the study. These are the points of contact, I am the primary point of contact, but we also have Steve Gager, who is a secondary Civil Works PM working on this project, and as mentioned earlier, Bob Kiesler, who's in the room with us, is the chief of PM that will be assisting us on this study. So, I'll pause there for any questions.
So, Dr. Cordera, pardon me, I didn't include that when I first addressed you.
Yeah.
What does this allow Oak Island to do that isn't already on the table that we're working on? Can you explain, like, the end goal, why, basically why we're doing this?
So, the intent is really to get a 50-year, you know, process in place, just like we already have several other places, locations, Wrightsville Beach, Cree Beach, Carolina Beach, Ocean Isle, to get a regularly scheduled beach nourishment project funded, at least in part by the federal government, something that is regularly occurring. That is kind of the main point in getting this feasibility study completed, and that's the end goal. So, in the three-by-three, that is doing it as quickly and as efficiently as we possibly can, and getting a study and, and kind of an analysis of, of the economic impacts of doing CSRM projects in the future.
So, how do we benefit, how does Oak Island benefit financially by participating in this program, if all goes well and is accepted, versus what we currently receive?
I'll pause and let Bob.
Is that a fair question?
No, it's a good, it's a good question. I just want people to understand what we're doing.
It's a great question. Let me explain authorization and appropriation, and Corps of Engineers is a, is a project-funded organization, so without funding, we can't work on a project. When I was 16 years old, I wanted a red Camaro. I asked my dad, "Can I have a red Camaro?" He said, "Sure." He authorized me getting the red Camaro, he didn't appropriate any money. I didn't get the red Camaro, I got it later in life. So, the feasibility study we're going through is, is to identify, is there federal interest in, is there, is the cost to build, is there a design that could protect Oak Island, provide 50 years protection, that the cost was less than the benefit? So, is there a mutual interest for the federal government and the locals to provide a project? So, the state would be authorized, but with Congress signing a document, the authorization to have a 50-year life is authorized, give us permission to buy the red Camaro. Then we'd budget for, then we would budget for renourcements. So, out of the, out of a successful CSRM Coastal Storm Risk Management study, we'd come up with an authorized design and a scheduled renourcement, and then also, we'd be monitoring. And then also we'd monitor it over time. So as you know better, we do mother nature changes, and sometimes we might need renourishment every three years, sometimes you might need it every five years. But what it would do for the town is you would have, based on science, an authorized project that would budget and for the life of the project, when Congress provides funds, would be constructed, and it would be cost shared 65, 35 federal, nonfederal currently. So it would be for all future renourcements for 50 years. When constructed, federal would pay $2 for every three, and also give you the opportunity, and you're already doing it now, I'm sure with your private work, is coordinate with the state. So the nonfederal share is not always just with the nonfederal local sponsor. The nonfederal share would be with the town, the state, the county, whoever y'all have your own agreements with to get funding. But it gives you a way to budget for, us to budget for, and partner to give you protection for 50 years. It's a project that's at any time during the study, at any time during the construction, if it's not something that the town likes, you can terminate at any time. Track funding as we go forward. I think that kind of answers your question.
So it doesn't affect our current projects and everything that we have laid out currently.
Right.
So we'd still have the master project in 24, 25 while this is going on. After the study is done, it still takes time to get the permit. So it may be six years that we're looking at, five to six years. During that process, you've been talking to Moffett Nickel about our next maintenance project. So you have the first project, then six years after that, we'd hopefully, or look at being a federal beach. So some of those dollars that you're looking at to go toward the town's project for the maintenance, if the federal project came along and we were accepted as federal project, then we could utilize those funds toward a federal project. This doesn't knock us out of any kind of harbor sand or any kind of projects like that. That continues right on forever.
The fact, the fact that Oak Island, all the communities of Oak Island have worked hard to protect your beach on your own dime and, and done, done a good job. Until we get a federal project, right now, if you have emergency, you're addressing FEMA. If you were to get an authorized federal project, and then we start constructing and mother nature hits us, we also have ability to get supplemental funds through, say you have a project that's renursed every four years, two years in, storm hits you, and you need to put sand on before the next four years. We have the ability to, to budget for and request same type of money that FEMA provides, but it's called storm supplemental money, that's 100% federal to put, to build projects back to pre-storm conditions. So you're not losing those kind of things. Other thing I want to share, the work and time you've invested for all the information, for bar source investigations, surveys, history, anything that we can use that you've already collected, we'd use it in our study and not, not reinvent the wheel twice. Had, had some very good meetings with Dave and, and staff and the consultants and are talking about short-term needs to help you all with your management plan, and we'd like to do that, and we're doing that also at the same time, looking for a long-term fix with the CSRM coastal storm risk management project.
So would it be accurate to say that where our normals, projects are here at the local and of course with state participation, and what you're offering is another layer of protection?
Yes, ma'am.
Based on study outcome?
Yes, ma'am. And I would say long-term, when we, when we do initial construction and build our, whatever project is approved, you wouldn't have to necessarily have the funding to maintain. Your, your local project would probably stop. You'd have the choice, but.
It's like an insurance program.
Yes, ma'am.
Right. So as long as we pay, pay the premium, it gives us a level of coverage.
Yes, ma'am. And also we're providing two-thirds of the dollars to help. From my standpoint, it's a good investment for taxpayers across the state and the region because, as you know better, we do, many, many of the users don't actually live at Oak Island. They come from all over, all over the state and all over the region to use the facilities and the beautiful areas you have here.
Off the top of your head, how many other beaches in North Carolina are federally funded beaches or eligible?
Currently, we have, currently in the state of North Carolina, we have eight authorized projects, or eight that have been given permission by Congress to build. Four of those have been constructed. Carolina Beach and Wrightsville Beach, two of the first, two storm renourishment projects in the Corps' history. Wrightsville Beach is actually, I mean, Carolina Beach is actually more than 50 years, is renewed for another 15 years. Ocean Isle Beach, so Brunswick County Beach Project was authorized in the 60s. I don't have to go through the history of how that's gone through time. Ocean Isle Beach pulled out in the late 1990s and got theirs broken apart and have initiated, theirs has been reconstructed, they're 20 years in. Holden Beach is about a year into theirs, and y'all would be just starting. So in some ways, I think it's a good time to be going because our, our technical team would be battle tested and going through some of the similar analysis that they've done for, for Holden Beach.
Thank you very much.
If I can ask two questions at once, and then probably a couple of follow-ups. My two initial questions is, does this pigeonhole us into going after a FEMA engineered beach?
It'd be a Corps of Engineers engineered beach, no, sir.
Second question is, do we get the funds immediately if a hurricane were to hit next year and we haven't reached certain plateaus?
So until you get authorized projects, you'll still be dealing with your local projects. So you'll be doing the same things you're doing now.
Once we get an authorized project, and you all will require dunes to be so high and sand to be at such a level, and we're not there yet, but we've entered into your program.
So we'll, we'll have an authorized project, and when funded, we'll build it to the dimensions that were designed. And I think your question is, over time, in between the next time, at what level do we renourish it to get it back? So in theory, a CSRM project, if it's working as designed, the protection of the dune is always there. And the sacrificial portion of the beach that erodes away, that gives some protection, we renourished before, there's erosion of the protection of the dune. So my analogy there is, if you ever played football and you had a great big running back running at you, and you hit him up high, you run right over you. If you hit him low, he might stop and fall. So the purpose of a CSRM project is it builds a beach a little bit wider, and it clips the energy from the waves further off coastline. So by the time it gets to the beach, the damage or the, the energy when it hits the beach is less. So the, part of the modeling and the analysis is to decide, what should the beach look like? And then based on erosion factors on the coastline, how often do you have to come back and renourish it? And we would forecast that, but then it's also, say we estimate we're going to renourish every five years, and mother nature doesn't require it. We, we might go farther in between or less, depending on how mother nature goes. So an interval cycle or interval time in between renourcements is something that is usually pretty consistent. But we've had cases, like for example, Ocean Isle Beach, where it was time to renourish the beach, we got the money, and based on surveys, it wasn't needed. So we didn't, we waited a year. We've had cases where storms have hit within six months to a year of construction, and we got money and fixed it again the next year. So we would be your advocates to try to budget for and get money to keep projects maintained as we go forward.
My Cliff Notes version, the difference between you all and the situation we have now with Moffett and Nichols, our, our engineers, we give them, or we allocate $35 million roughly for hopefully a five or six-year period. Your situation is probably the same amount of money, but if you, we reach certain plateaus, we're reimbursed without a doubt 65, 35. Is that the down and dirty?
Well, every time we construct it, we put 65%. The nonfederal will match with 35% as we go forward. So you're not reimbursed, you would, you would be given your share. So instead of paying the full prize, you'd be paying a third of.
And then on, on maintenance going forward, is that also 65, 35?
Yes.
At, at what point does that kick in?
It kicks in on initial construction. So we go through the, you go through the feasibility phase. If the project is, if there's a federal interest and the project is authorized, then we would turn around and have a new start construction. We'd, we'd battle for construction dollars, get the funds, do initial construction, and start the process. So your 50-year life for a project, we would, we would execute a project partnership agreement, PPA, that breaks down all the, you know, the cost and information that we would know long before we got there. But the actual date when the 50-year life starts is when the dredge shows up and starts pumping. So, you know, we might execute a PPA and wait a year or two for funding, your money or our money. And if a storm were to hit when we were waiting, you would still be able to address your FEMA dollars.
Any other questions from Council?
Yeah, I got a couple. So what you're proposing is not supplemental insurance. You're proposing to be a primary insurance provider potentially with, with your plan. Essentially replacing what we've been presented with a beach maintenance plan already, we would just replace it with your beach maintenance plan. My concern is, on your timeline, the study completion isn't until October of 2026. We're targeting our nourishment project to wrap up probably by March or April of 2025. But I do see on your timeline, an agency decision in January of 2025. Tell me a little bit more about that agency decision milestone there. What exactly does that mean? Because what I want to avoid is going through an RFP process for a beach management plan, as Council McCraft pointed out, which we've been given projections could as much as 34, $35 million. I'd, I'd like to avoid that RFP process if we could see your plan prior to that procurement process, if that makes sense. Because I think I heard you say, well, you could abandon the other plan, but if we've, if we're contractually committed to some beach maintenance plan, before we understand what your plan is, I, I don't, I don't want you to be supplemental insurance, is what I'm saying, right?
Let me just make sure I get one thing clear. The, the town of Oak Island is a, is a partner, and we'll have discussions at any time, don't have to wait for milestones. I imagine, well, I know for sure it's part of our agreement, we'll give you a monthly update on where we are, not just funding-wise, but what we, what tasks we checked off and information as we go. We have a project delivery team, and Oak Island will be part of that project delivery team. So as far as being in the dark about where we are or what the process is, if you ever feel that way, call me and we'll fix that. But you're, you're, you know, we were joking about stakeholders, and, and we've solved, we solve problems by talking and working together. So that's the one thing I would say, they wouldn't, you wouldn't have to wait for, those are, those are scheduled meetings to keep the Corps of Engineers tracking. So don't have, you don't have to wait for any scheduled meeting, have the information, and you'll, you'll never walk into an ADM meeting and not know what we're going to say. So that's one thing I'll just will say. I, I think we can come back and help answer questions on what, let, present our project, and then also we're helping with the things that you're doing on your, on your management plan, but give you information so y'all can make the best decision on what you're doing. So I don't, I don't want to say ours. I think it's a great option, but that's a decision y'all have to make on your.
Yeah, I appreciate that.
And when we were on the phone the other day, we talked about timetables and laying something out. On our side, Moffett Nickel is supposed to start looking at a timetable for us for the master plan permitting through lease agreements and all those things, and then to lay out the next year, next six-year plan. So while we're doing that, the contracted price for a sand and those things won't be until the need gets a little closer, which hopefully will allow them time to finish their three years and then the next three years, so we can go that route instead of having to do the first maintenance plan. I mean, that would be the perfect, perfect layout for us. But we have to keep track of the other one just to make sure we get the permitting, we find sand and those kind of things as we go for our maintenance plan, so we can maintain our beach. But at the same time, working with them, just like we're working with them now, on our permitting for our beach and our sand sources that we're looking at, they're all sort of mingling together, and all the information that we get, we give them, and they provide information to us too for sand sourcing. So I think we're all working together. It's just that it does take time to get Congress and everybody to approve us, and that's the time that you're asking about. It's going to be a clock that is out of his control and our control, but we would like for it to end up on the perfect date for us.
Well, I liked his response that, you know, essentially they have an open door, right? So at any point in time, if we're second guessing ourselves, we can just get them in here or get on the phone and try to reconcile where we think we may be. So I like that, that we're, that they're accessible and they want to help and, and work with us. So I like that. The other, the other questions I have are, I'm sorry, go ahead.
I would say Colonel, our Colonel, Colonel Brad Morgan was scheduled to come here, and he had a family issue, that he couldn't make it. So I'm sure he'll love to come speak to you, and if there's any time that you'd like us to speak publicly and answer core questions, to the mayor's point, our, our acronyms are hard for us to understand. So we're glad to try to explain the Corps of Engineers monopoly rules that sometimes are hard, hard for us to explain.
My other questions are related to the actual contract, so I don't know if, should I delay those questions, Brian, or they, can they stay at the podium and we move into that? But I'll wait and see if there's any other questions regarding the presentation.
I welcome the Corps representatives' input. They deal with these every single day, but I'll be happy to field whatever questions you have about the contract. If y'all are getting tired of standing up, you can sit down.
First question I had, after reviewing the contract, kind of quickly, I didn't see the scope of work from the presentation mentioned in the, in the contract. It looks like the contract tried to describe a little bit about what this study would do, but are you, by providing a presentation, are you, are you saying that the scope of work that you've presented could, could be an addendum to the, to the contract? I just, I'm trying to understand where the scope of work kind of crosses over into the contract that's laying right here.
And by, by scope of work, are you referring to the actual nourishment or the scope of work in developing the, I'll try to refrain from acronyms, the project management plan?
This is a feasibility cost sharing agreement, FCSA.
Right.
And this is the agreement between us and the nonfederal sponsor that allows us to, to initiate and start this three-year study we're talking about.
That's the deliverable.
Okay.
The PMP.
Yes, sir.
Okay. So when, when the contract says the deliverable is the study, we're confident that we can turn to this presentation, and this is your standard study?
Yes.
Was what I'm asking.
Yes.
Okay.
So we would have all core projects, all civil works core projects go through a study or a feasibility study, if authorized, and the nonfederal sponsor would like to continue to execute a project partnership agreement where whatever we've studied is constructed. So that would be a follow-on agreement, and then we would move to construction with funding.
Okay. All right. So Brian, are you, are we comfortable with that?
Yes, sir. If you'll look at throughout the, the word study and study costs, or they interplay with the PMP. And this is a requisite study to have in place before you can get funding, essentially. So, and this is consistent with all the other beach towns?
Yes.
As well, yeah.
Okay. Then my next question is, the, under definition of terms, they defined a fiscal year as beginning October 1st. Our fiscal year starts July 1st. So now we're looking at a budget item that's going to span fiscal years for us? Are we, are we prepared to, to manage through that? Is that a David Kelly question?
So what we've, we've done with you before, when we set aside the $1.5 million over a three-year period, we went ahead and laid that out into the projects that we have for the taxes and showed how we were doing that. So all this already laid out through those budgets for those years. So all this already laid out through those budgets for those years. And so what we would have to do is go back, we'd make a budget amendment to move the $500,000 over to the account and then wire the funds to them once they have the signature on the 19th. So we're okay with the October because we've already laid out a three-year projection with y'all anyway for the funds.
Excellent point, because I also see it appears that payment is within 15 calendar days. Is that, am I reading that correctly? So if, if, if the contract is approved this evening and we have to make a budget amendment, which won't occur until November's meeting, unless we call a special meeting, are we going to be able to make this 15-day?
So I think.
That's a $25,000 initial payment. Is that, are you on?
Yes.
Article 2B1?
Yeah. There's an initial payment and then the rest of the money would be due, I think, on their timeline by the end of October, right? There was a payment, another payment by the end of October.
So we would have to call a special meeting for that.
Just on, on core terms, the, the con, the, the town signs it whenever you decide to sign it and the, the date of execution with the date Colonel Morgan signs on. You know, we could, we could always work, if, if you needed more time to make a decision on funding, we could always, within the agreement, pick a date that suited, suited that as well. So I wouldn't, I wouldn't worry about the dates. I think the execution date is the day Colonel Morgan signs it. Whether you sign it today and he signs it tomorrow, he could sign it next week, he could sign it.
It's not a, it's not a funding issue. I mean, we've.
I understand your process.
The money is, is there.
Yeah.
It's, it's a, it's a budget amendment, which is going to require a special meeting. So we'll have to get on the calendars and figure all that out. We've got a council member not here this evening.
Sure.
So we've got to factor that in as well.
Yep.
So, okay, that's, that's all my questions.
One last question. I told you there'd be a follow-up. And thank you for standing there and letting total strangers ask you hard questions.
That's okay.
Thank you. You mentioned erosion. We already have an erosion issue. Retroactively, can you address five-year ago, 10-year ago, issues that are still hindering us from going forward? We have certain areas on the west, west end of our island that have bad erosion problems last two or three or four years. And I don't have an answer.
I would say through our modeling, we'll come up with a, a plan that provides the best protection. I don't want to say produce protection. It's the reason core names change. It used to be flood risk management, coastal storm risk management as opposed to storm protection. You know, not, not just everybody can guarantee protection. It's mother nature. So we're minimizing risk and y'all know that better than anybody. We'll go through a modeling that does series and series of trial and error. Try to pick the most, the best protection, risk management for the funds provided. So get the best benefit cost ratio. So we will do our best. And if for some reason we click along and we find out that it's not going to be a federal interest, we would, we wouldn't, we would have discussions at that point and not spend your money just to finish the study. Feel confident we're going to have a good project here. And I've been watching Brunswick County and the growth in Brunswick County. My whole career, been in Wilmington 38 years and particularly town of Oak Island, much has changed on this island over the last two decades. We're getting ready to put, I don't know, a million, a million and a half yards from the navigation channel on Oak Island here a year from now. So always have had a good relationship and good working relationship with all the communities on, on the island itself.
Thank you, sir.
Last question for me. So we have done a fair amount of data gathering and studying with Moffett and Nickel. Does your being able to leverage that accelerate the timeline?
Yes, ma'am. It, it does two things. It accelerates the timeline and it also minimizes your cost. So we're going to design a project and say it is a, more than likely it's going to be some type of sand placement. And how many cubic yards does it have to have over 50 years? And where do we go, where do we have to find it? And you've already done a lot of that investigation already. So we already know that there's X number of sand here in this location. So we would have to look at it again. If we didn't have it, we'd have to go look for it and, and you'd have to pay for it again. You'd pay 50% of it again. So David and his team have been good partners to date. And we've had two or three meetings of, of high level on your short-term plan with your management plan and then also the possibility of this CSRM project.
So the Army Corps of Engineers also takes care of the ICW, the Lockwood Folly, right? Which it dredges periodically.
Yes, ma'am.
What have any of the corps' projects ever included something other than sand? For instance, a groin or other type of structure that would help to accrete sand and, and potentially keep it out of the Lockwood Folly?
We would look at all types of alternatives to include structural alternatives. Sand nourishment is considered a structural alternative, but you're talking more like a jetty or.
A groin.
Groins, termagroins, those types of things. We would also look at those. We look at environmental possibilities. Not in North Carolina, but there's some projects that'll put reef balls or sandballs offshore at, you know.
Slow wave action.
Those kind of things. So we'll look at a series of things, but try to find the ones that, that best impact you. We'll also look at what impacts do you have from the backside of the island from storm flooding? Or say you have a lunar tide and a hurricane hits you then? What, you know, what kind of things? Is there something we could do to help you on the backside too? It's not just the front side.
Excellent. So that was, thank you for that answer. It was what I was hoping for.
Lastly, if I may, and it is lastly, thank you. The eight federally funded beaches now have been approved. If we enter into this, once we are approved, does that make it easier for us to receive grants from the federal government or does that enter in?
I don't, I, I'll say it this way. We have four constructed beaches in North Carolina. And you saw on the news how Wrightso Beach this past year, they've missed one year nourishment cycle. That's the first time in, it doesn't matter which, whether it's Democrat or Republican in the, in the White House. Nourishment for beach projects is, in many cases, has come from Congress and congressional support in southeastern North Carolina has been solid, whether it's been Mike McIntyre, Democrat, or David Rouse, or Republican. So there's, there's strong interest on both sides there. But I can't answer what Congress is going to do in the future, so.
Can you answer what they've done in the past for the others? I can't let you off that easy.
We've maintained Carolina Beach, Cury Beach and Wrightso Beach and Oshil Beach on a regular basis. I'm sure you can talk to Mayor Smith and ask that question and get her perspective on what we've done. The sand that we put on the, on the, from the waterway contract, we're getting ready to put some on here this fall. Oh no, we're going to Holden Beach, we just finished, we're going to Holden Beach next time. So we're, the, the federal government realizes that sand is a resource. And if, from a navigation, when we go harbor, we're dredging a million and a half every two years right here in your front door for navigation to get the speed bump out of the channel. If we can find a place to put it that can help a CSRM project, wherever that might be, that's, that's, that's a win-win. It may not build the whole project, but I can pay for the same dredge to come do this and help with this one and then while he's there, finish that one. So we're looking to bundle, if that's a word we can use, or, you know, be efficient, share mobilization costs. If, if folks don't realize, just to get the dredge to show up, the dredge to put the sand on Oshil Beach from the waterway, we pay $2, $3 million just before they turn the dredge on sometimes. So having, that's why we do appreciate Oak Island and Holden Beach when we're there, providing non-federal money to show we can dredge more. It helps us from the waterway, but you're also getting sand at a cheaper cost per cubic yard. And if you were to get your own dredge to come in. So I'm trying to figure out to be, to solve problems together. I, I would recommend that you talk to your neighbors at Oshil Beach over, over their experience with us. That, that would be somebody I think in your own county that would be a good resource.
Mayor Smith is very appreciative of the relationship that Oshil has with you. I believe Mayor Holden would say, would say the same. I've had those conversations.
Thank you.
Any other? Do we need a motion to sign the agreement? Yeah, a motion to approve the agreement. Do we have a motion?
I'll make the motion to approve the agreement. I'd like for our attorney to look at it.
Yeah.
Okay, you have looked at it?
Yes, ma'am. I'll second it.
All in favor? Unanimous.
Thank you.
So we'll have this for you. You'll be a parting gift.
Claire, can we take like a five-minute break and get those signed?
Yes, let them get out of here. So we'll break for five minutes to sign this document. If we can keep it to five, I'd like to keep the moving, meeting moving. But thank you both very much. Thank you for the little extra time. We needed to get documents signed and in the right hands. Is there something to follow?
No, ma'am, we're on the fire prevention. We're good to go.
Okay. So October 8th through 14th is Fire Prevention Week with the theme Cooking Safety Starts With You. That's a national theme. I'm not going to read all of the document, but the highlights, excuse me. Whereas the town of Oak Island is committed to ensuring the safety and security of all those living in and visiting our town. And Oak Island's residents should turn pot handles toward the back of the stove. Always keep a lid nearby when cooking. Keep a three-foot, three-foot kid-free zone around the stove, oven and other things that could get hot. Watch what they heat and set a timer to remind them that, that they're cooking. And whereas residents who have planned and practiced a home fire escape plan are more prepared and will therefore be more likely to survive a fire. When whereas the 2023 Fire Prevention Week theme, Cooking Safety Starts With You, Pay Attention to Fire Prevention effectively serves to remind us to stay alert and use caution when cooking to reduce the risk of kitchen fires. Therefore, I, S. Elizabeth White, Mayor of the Town of Oak Island, do hereby proclaim October 8th through 14th, 2023, as Fire Prevention Week. And I urge all the people of Oak Island to check their kitchens for fire hazards during Fire Prevention Week and to use safe cooking practices and to support public safety activities and efforts of Oak Island's Fire and Emergency Services. This the 10th day of October, 2023. So we move on to a presentation for the planning department.
Yeah. I'm pretty sure we have the right slides at this time. So let's skip through all my wonderful slides for the first thing. I'm here to give you an annual report, a kind of snapshot of the last 12 months in the planning department. I want to start off by saying, and I've been here a little bit over a year. It's been really just a tremendous honor to work here with the town. Everything that comes out of my department is in the support of you, the elected officials, the planning board, Board of Adjustment, town administration, and especially the town staff, who we have a good coordinating relationship with the other departments. And we have a tremendous planning department staff as well. Really lucky to be able to move in and utilize a great group of folks. So just first, a little high-level information, you know, what is the planning department? Who's there? We have a, a pretty small department overall. I'm the department head. Underneath me, we have, the newest addition to our staff is Brady Golden. Some of you have had the pleasure of meeting Brady. He's a tremendous young man that came to us from Beaufort. He's a planner one, an entry-level planner position. We also have a Coastal Area Management Act Local Permit Officer and Flood Plan Administrator. That's Courtney Milliron. And we have two zoning technicians, Deidra Horn and David Emerson as well. So what do we do? What's the planning department all about? We have a few core duties and they get broken down into kind of subcategories. First and foremost, we maintain the adopted plans and policies of the town. The biggest one being the Comprehensive Land Use Plan. We administer the Unified Development Ordinances. That takes a lot of different forms, inspections, code enforcement cases, et cetera, review imperments. We administer the KAMA LPO program and flood hazard prevention ordinances as well. We enforce nuisance ordinances. Those aren't necessarily in the UDO, but they're also in our code of ordinances. Our department handles those. And as you well know, we serve as staff to town council. You've seen me many times over the past year and a half. As a town council, planning board, Board of Adjustment and help liaise with the Environmental Advisory Committee as well. And so one thing I want to start us off with, our Comprehensive Land Use Plan sets a vision for what the town of Oak Island wants to be going forward. And I'll briefly read that vision. The Oak Island will be a community which preserves, protects and enhances its natural and cultural environment, including shoreline access, waterway, beaches, dunes, water access, residential areas and recreational opportunities for all ages and abilities. The town's unique scale and character will continue to provide a desirable place in which to live, work and vacation. That multimodal transportation options include efficient sidewalks, bikeways and roadway systems will provide for an accessible community. And that economic development will be coordinated with the preservations of the town residential areas. So in the Comprehensive Land Use Plan, this kind of sets this big vision and then breaks down some goals to achieve that vision. And then even further down drills down into potential action items that can help the town achieve that vision. And we'll briefly go through some of what the, the town staff does in the planning department, first being code and nuisance enforcement. So we investigate violations of the town ordinances in the UDO as well as nuisances. Nuisances covers kind of a wide range of items, including junk vehicles, tall grass, weeds, accumulation of trash, animal waste, odors, right-of-way obstructions. That's just a snapshot of some of those nuisances that we see. Couple of examples, you know, you got a little junk vehicle here on the left, some trash and debris here on the right as well. Code enforcement looked at 1,002 code enforcement cases last year that were opened, which is a tremendous amount. Out of those, 1,2859 of those were closed, 57 were unfounded, 80 are still in progress. Obviously, we've had some that just recently opened that are still going through the process. So that's approximately 84 code cases a month for the past 12 months. That involves a staff member receiving a complaint, scheduling a time to go out, actually inspecting the site, determining whether a violation exists or not. If one does exist, they have to write a letter to get in contact with the property owner and then continue that case along. And our goal with code enforcement nuisance is to get people into compliance with the ordinance. We want to help people figure out how they can comply with the ordinances. We're not there to lock anybody up. It's not our goal to, you know, get people in trouble. We want everybody to, you know, know what the rules are and follow them to the best of their ability. So as you can see, the vast majority of those cases we get reported are either closed or found to be unfounded, over 90%. In addition to code enforcement, as I mentioned, we also deal with KAMA. In addition to code enforcement, uh, as I mentioned, we also deal with KAMA. KAMA is the Coastal Area Management Act. Um, the KAMA program allows for what's called a local permit officer to handle certain permits. Um, that means that people who need to get a KAMA permit, they don't have to go to a state agency. They don't have to ride up to Wilmington to talk to somebody. They can come right here to the Town of Oak Island, uh, and receive some assistance, uh, dealing with KAMA issues. Our local permit officer is Courtney Milliron. Uh, we have a field representative for the areas, Patrick Amico, and the district manager is Tara McPherson. This KAMA is a little strange because we have a couple of things. We're delegated authority. Um, we're working under, uh, the Division of Coastal Management when we administer this program. Um, so the Division of Coastal Management is under the NCDEQ, the Department of Environmental Quality. Uh, the Coastal Resources Commission sets these rules and adopts the rules for KAMA enforcement. And then our local permit officer, uh, is able to oversee minor activities. So if somebody needs to do some work and they think it might be exempt, she can review it to determine whether it's an exemption or not, or she can also review minor permits for that. These don't apply to everywhere in the town. You have to be in certain, uh, areas of environmental concern like ocean hazard areas, uh, inlet hazard, unvegetated beach, as well as coastal shorelines, uh, as well. So not everybody who builds a house or does development in the town necessarily needs a KAMA permit or needs to speak with them, uh, but there is quite a bit. Um, as you can see here, uh, Courtney, uh, reviewed 133 permits for exemptions and 75 minor permits. Uh, in addition, she has to do quite a few site visits to look at these, uh, properties, 237 to establish the first line of vegetation. So she has, actually has to physically go out, look at what plants are out there, determine what's the stable line, and flag it, uh, on the property. Uh, she also goes out for general site visits and consultations. If she has a minor permit review, sometimes that requires a, a site visit as well. Folks that are worried about development in KAMA areas that may not meet the standards, they call her. She can come out and do an inspection to determine whether they, uh, have violated any KAMA regulations. Uh, and also she just has to meet people on staff. Sometimes it's DCM, you know, the field representative needs to meet with her on the site, et cetera. So she has a, a few other categories that she's gone out with as well. So when she goes out and looks at these areas, this is the west end of the beach. I'll just show you a quick progression of how that shoreline changes, just even within a year, right? January 2013, uh, February 2014, the very next year, you can see that, uh, shoreline has changed tremendously. Uh, and then October, you know, just a few months later, it's changed again. So, uh, anytime someone goes out and gets a KAMA determination, uh, it's always important to know that, as we just heard, Mother Nature comes in and makes changes for us on the shoreline. So, uh, often we have to, even if she's flagged a first line of vegetation, if there's a storm, she may have to go out and flag it again for somebody because that might have So looking at, uh, her KAMA site visits, uh, as you can see here, most of them are to determine the first line of vegetation in general, um, and with a much smaller percentage being for minor permit reviews, because usually she's already done the first line of vegetation so that she doesn't have to go back and recheck, um, complaints, et cetera. Uh, in addition to KAMA, uh, Courtney deals with our flood hazard prevention ordinance here in the town. Uh, as you can see, an example here from Hurricane Floyd in 1999. We've obviously had several other major storms since then, Florence and Matthew, uh, most recently have been some of the bigger ones to come through. Flood zones, uh, are once again not everywhere in the town. They're geographic areas that FEMA has determined, uh, have a varying level of flood risk. Uh, but everyone lives in a flood zone. Water can go anywhere. Water doesn't care what the map says when you're out there. Uh, what flood zones identify is the amount of risk that you have on an annual basis for a flooding event to occur. We have a few different types of zones here in the town. Uh, Zone X is pretty much anywhere that has a point two, I should say, point two percent annual flooding risk. So they have, that commonly referred to as a 500-year storm, um, but really what you have is a point two annual chance of having a flood event. Uh, Shaded X, uh, actually goes above that point two. Then there's the AE, which is a area that has a 1% chance of annual flooding. And then the VE, that's our coastal flood area, so there's a 1% chance of annual flooding with velocity. And so that means that there's a wave action greater than three feet in that VE area based on the FEMA flood hazard map. Uh, so in addition to her KAMA LPO work, uh, we reviewed 225 flood hazard permits, uh, the majority of which being either land use, which is kind of your first permit when you're getting ready to start develop, uh, or residential buildings as well, a few pools, uh, one residential building, but the vast majority being residential development. There's a breakdown where you can see that in percentages. Uh, so over 80% fall under those two categories of property. Uh, also, I'm really proud of Courtney this year. She, uh, passed the test to become a certified flood plan administrator. Uh, that's a national certification, uh, that we have here and that we have somebody on staff here with the town. Uh, we have a couple others as well, myself included. Um, but everyone we can add on just adds to our capacity in the town to manage, uh, flood hazards here. So getting back to our Unified Development Ordinance, uh, there's quite a few sections of the Unified Development Ordinance. It's actually Appendix A of our total code of ordinances, uh, includes our regulations for zoning, subdivisions, development review processes, uh, just kind of high-level zoning regulates uses, so what kind, how you can use land, where you can place a building, how you design a site. Uh, subdivision is just how you divide property basically, um, as well as when you have to design a new road for that division, how you design that new road. And then development review processes is basically how the town reviews major, minor site designs, uh, also single-family home, uh, developments as well. Uh, and so under that UDO, we reviewed, uh, 1,017 permit applications in the last 12 months. Uh, that's 10, also, we reviewed 10 minor and two major projects. Uh, those are typically site reviews or subdivisions of land. Uh, and in addition to those permit reviews, uh, town staff conducted 2,707 inspections related to those permit reviews, uh, 341 for site compliance. That's kind of your first inspection that you get. Uh, 604 for stormwater. Uh, we assist the Stormwater Division with doing onsite inspections for development. 846 for final planning and zoning. Uh, so that's our checkoff to make sure you meet all the criteria of the UDO when you build a, most commonly a house. But, uh, 505 for silt fence and temporary construction driveways. We have set standards for what your construction entrance has to look like, how you have to have, uh, the fencing around it, and then 411 for driveway forming as well. So quite a few inspections being done. Uh, the vast majority of those inspections are being done by our code enforcement officers. So not only are they out there doing code cases every day, they're doing a tremendous amount of inspections every day as well. As you can see on breakdown, this is actually a little bit more even than some of the other ones. Uh, they do kind of a smattering of each, uh, inspection every day, uh, but still the majority of those being the final, uh, planning and zoning inspections. So then as I mentioned, uh, we serve as staff to a few different boards here in the town. First and foremost being the Town Council. Um, we helped the Town Council with 24 agenda items, uh, over the last year. Uh, 18 public hearings, three text amendments, uh, that didn't require a public hearing. So there's certain sections of the code ordinances don't require a public hearing to amend, uh, so those fall under this category. Couple of major site plan reviews and one general report that we made to the board. Uh, in addition, with the Planning Board, uh, we reviewed quite a few, uh, items with them, uh, several proposed amendments, discussion items, uh, also those major site plan reviews, and then other reports and agenda items as well. So quite a bit of, uh, work being done to prepare for those board meetings and get those, uh, reports and agenda items out. Uh, in addition, uh, we reviewed stuff for the Board of Adjustment. Uh, the Board of Adjustment meets on an ad hoc basis, so only when we get an application in for a, a variance or an appeal, uh, does the board actually meet. Uh, we had seven, six variance cases in the last 12 months and one appeal of a staff determination as well. So in addition to all those kind of daily checkoff things and board support, uh, we're also responsible for long-range planning, uh, here in the town. First and foremost is kind of the administration of the Comprehensive Land Use Plan, which as I mentioned, is kind of our big vision document for what the, the, the Town of Oak Island wants to be going forward. It was adopted in 2017. You have kind of a snippet of the future land use map. Uh, I know you're all familiar with that, just having sat on a couple of rezoning cases. Usually when we have a rezoning, uh, you've heard me refer to this future land use map and what the future land use categories are. Um, so with the support of town administration and the council through the budget process, we've actually got monies appropriated to, uh, update this Comprehensive Land Use Plan. Uh, and we're hopeful to, to get that in front of you here in the next couple of months and RFP to get some assistance, uh, to update this plan. Uh, in addition, we work with the Cape Fear RPO. That's the Rural Planning Organization. Uh, the RPO assists the town with transportation planning, uh, needs. Uh, up here on the screen, you have a snippet of a feasibility study, uh, for East Coast Greenway that was kind of done in conjunction with the county and the RPO, uh, as well as other local agencies to identify potential, uh, areas for greenways. Um, we worked with the RPO, uh, for quite a few different things, uh, collecting traffic counts at locations, um, looking at, uh, projects that might be submitted to NCDOT for scoring through prioritization, to see if there's a potential for, uh, state funds to be allocated to new projects, uh, as well. And then we also provide GIS support, uh, for, uh, other departments here in the town as well as, uh, the Town Council and other department, and other, uh, boards. Uh, what we have here is a snippet of a map that we made for the, uh, Fire Department. Uh, Chief Price needed to know, uh, how far on a road was five miles from each fire station so he could, uh, determine how far out that five-mile drive distance is. Uh, so we helped him create that map and visualize that, uh, five-mile travel distance area. This is just a snippet of it, but we did the whole island's jurisdiction. Uh, as you can see, it, the kind of the purple, dark purple lines in the middle there are actually the road segments, and then, uh, it carved out the areas around it as being potentially reached within a five-mile drive distance as well. So, uh, very helpful in that regard. So all that being said, um, you know, what's the, what's the future of the department look like, uh, here? Some areas that, uh, we think are, are worth continuing our efforts are, uh, to continue long-range planning efforts. As I mentioned, the Comprehensive Land Use Plan is the big, next big long-range, uh, planning item that's out there, and that's kind of the overarching plan for the town. It's the big umbrella plan. If there's any smaller plans that need to come out of that, whether it's a, you know, commercial corridor study or a bike ped plan or anything like that, those usually spring out of that larger plan, uh, that sets the tone for the town. And then once we have those plans adopted, how do we implement them? It's not just actually, plan's great if it's pretty and it says a lot of nice things, but you actually have to put boots on the ground and, and nose to the grindstone and actually get some of those things done. Um, so how do we get those done, you know, in the future as these plans get updated and adopted? Uh, in addition, how do we enhance our GIS capabilities? We have a platform called ESRI or ESRI, uh, that the town uses for our mapping and geographic information system. Um, it's a pretty powerful platform that has, uh, quite a lot of abilities baked into it already. Um, not just mapping, but surveys, uh, for getting public input, uh, creating public information hubs for maps, uh, for public-facing documents, et cetera. So, uh, there's certainly ways that we can leverage that to, uh, enhance the town's, uh, public input, uh, and information processes. Further, uh, as you well know, we, uh, had the Cape Fear Council of Governments audit our Unified Development Ordinance recently. Um, and town staff anticipates to continue working on implementation of those recommendations. Uh, we've been working diligently with the Planning Board, uh, to work on modernizing our table of uses. That's the first step out of those recommendations. Certainly there were several more of that, you know, as we check those items off, we'll continue to work on as well. Uh, and then potentially, uh, look at ways to enhance our flood hazard prevention. Um, the town participates in a program through the flood hazard prevention, uh, that's called the Community Rating System. What the Community Rating System does is, uh, as towns adopt higher standards and more, uh, flood hazard prevention efforts, uh, FEMA actually comes in and gives you a discount on federally-backed flood insurance. And it's based, for each grade that you get, it's a 5% discount for everyone who buys federally-backed flood insurance. Um, so definitely any way we can enhance that. We recently, uh, maintained a grade six, uh, on our last review that just wrapped up, uh, earlier this year, um, and that was in the face of actually higher standards. They, they upped the standards on us and we still maintained our grade six, which is right in the middle of the grade. 10 is the lowest and 1 is the highest. So we're right in the middle, um, but there's certainly ways that we can enhance that further and maybe eke that, uh, that grade up a point, uh, and see some benefits for everybody who buys flood hazard insurance, uh, here in the town. Uh, so what are our department goals going forward? Uh, first and foremost, uh, we want to complete the update of the Comprehensive Land Use Plan. Um, that's a critical document here for the town. Uh, it's definitely in need of update at this point. Uh, it was adopted in 2017, so we're a little bit six years, uh, since its adoption. Uh, typically a five-to-10-year range is when you want to, uh, update those plans. Uh, evaluate our needs for long-range, long-range planning efforts and implementation, uh, as I mentioned earlier. Uh, figure out ways to enhance our GIS capabilities throughout the town, uh, so we can assist not just the planning department, uh, boards and elected officials, but also other, uh, town departments as well that could benefit from, from these mapping capabilities. Uh, we've really been lucky to get some, uh, some town staff training, uh, and we want to continue that as well. Um, we want to get our zoning technicians and planners to achieve their certified zoning official status. We've got two staff members taking that course right now. Um, and they're hopefully going to wrap that up in the beginning of next month. That's a state certification, uh, requires continuing education, um, so that keeps everybody up to date on what the latest advances in, in zoning in North Carolina are. Uh, in addition, we want to make sure that all of our planning staff, uh, achieve a certified flood plan manager certification, just to build that capacity. Um, you know, right now we have a, a couple of staff members outside of Courtney that are also CFM, but the more people we have, uh, the better we can help administer that program here in the town. We want to work to continue to implement the recommendations from the UDO audit. Uh, so certainly, as I mentioned, as we continue to check off, uh, each, uh, recommendation, we want to move on to the next one to keep the ball rolling on that. And find, hopefully, uh, on our next CRAS rating evaluation, achieve a grade five. Um, you know, this is something that the town has either made progress on each time or maintained their level. Certainly like to see us on our next cycle, uh, try to reach for that next grade. Uh, just, one, it's not just the, about the, uh, the discount that people get on their flood insurance. We're enhancing flood hazard prevention with each step. It's designed to make the town more resilient, uh, in a flood, either through knowledge, through educational events, uh, through development standards, et cetera. So, um, that's a really good goal. Uh, unfortunately, it's on a two-year cycle, so we'll have to wait a little bit on that one, but we've already, Courtney, I've already been, uh, strategizing on ways that we can identify stuff that we could get additional points on and hopefully get to that next grade on the next, um, on the next round. So, well, with that, like I said, it's just a brief snapshot of what we've been doing and where we hope to go, uh, over the next year or two. Uh, I'd be happy to try to answer any questions you might have, but that's all I had for you tonight.
Questions for Matt?
I just want to thank him for making me feel awful old. When I served, when I, when I served in that department in the very beginning, I think we had one building inspector, an assistant building inspector, and me. So that was way before social media, way before we could get G, do GIS. We had to get all that from the county. So doing the, doing the, um, upgrade for, for the insurance rate was a nightmare. So thank you, Matt.
It, it's tough every year. Uh, you know, federal agencies, you know, they want you to cross all your Ts and dot all your Is in a very specific way. So, uh, we've been lucky that the folks we deal with over there have been
Absolutely.
Very accommodating, and they've, they've helped us out quite a bit. If we're ever missing anything or anything needs to be updated, they always give us an opportunity to do that. It's been good.
All I have to say is a lot of impressive numbers for five people in your office.
Yes, sir.
Tremendous.
Yeah. I'm blessed to have a, a really great staff down there, uh, helping us out, getting all this work done. Yes, sir.
Thank you, Matt. Great job, buddy.
Thank you.
Very professional. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Matt. Great presentation.
Appreciate it. All right, moving along. Counsel, are there any changes to the agenda you want to make? We good?
Good.
Go ahead. Yes, sir?
I'm not council member. I'll wait my turn. We don't need a closed session. That was put on there as a placeholder. So we don't need one.
Do we need a motion to remove it?
Just when you amend the, you know, a motion to approve the agenda as amended, that amendment will be removal at the closed session.
Got it. So do we have a motion?
Yeah, and I'll just note that we had the earlier amendment to add that action. So I'll just note that for the record here.
Yep.
So we need a motion from counsel to approve the agenda with the additions noted.
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda as amended.
Second.
All in favor? unanimous. Thank you. Public comment. Just again, remind everyone, state your name and address and be mindful of your, make the best use of the time that you have. Joe Yeager.
Madam Mayor, council members and fellow Oak Island residents, I just wanted to come to the, the meeting here and tell you guys about a new kind of committee we formed. It was this, the Business Advisory Board, working very closely with Hallie on that, that kind of a role. We're really excited to have a paid position in the, in the city around kind of an economic development. We'd had our very first meeting that was, I think, on September 27th. There's about 10 of us on the board, all from kind of the small business and real estate and also local residents. We're very excited to be able to kind of work with the city and the council members and the mayor around building and ensuring really an efficient collaborative and friendly economic environment for the city. So we're really looking forward to that. We had our first meeting, like I said, and we're also doing a monthly meeting. So it's the fourth Tuesday every month and we're going to do that in the police training room. So that's where we're going to do that and keep that going. We'll bring up topics from probably time to time that we'd like to present to you and, and hopefully we'll make some headway. So that's all I have.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you.
Excellent. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Next, we had Wayne Brookover, but he unfortunately had to leave. He was here earlier.
Yes.
And so he left some items for me to present to the mayor and they are lovely write-ups about the Ocean Education Center and the Nature Center. And he also wanted to note that attendance was up 3%. So Mayor, I will present these to you on his behalf.
Excellent. Thank you.
You're welcome.
They are, they're beautifully framed. The Nature Center and the OKI, OKI Ocean Ed Center, which is one of my personal favorites. We'll pass them down. Thank you very much.
And next we have Andy Spradley.
Members of the council, Madam Mayor, Andy Spradley, 114 Southeast Sixth Street here for Oak Island Beach Preservation. And we have arrived at the season of fall. It's characterized by relative tranquility and cooler temperatures. But during the peak tourism period, Oak Island Beach Preservation hosts what we call flash sweeps, where we get volunteers to come out, we pick an access point and we give them five minutes to clean it up. This year was more than successful. We had a total of 26 adult volunteers, five younger ones and two dogs. And we got seven different access points. So we were able to get these areas clean, even though they looked clean when you first walked up. You can see that's just five minutes' work with those few people that day. We want to extend our gratitude to all the people who came out and helped us keep our Now, Oak Island Beach Preservation is very proud and excited to announce its partnership with the city in deploying rent stations. You've probably seen one of these at a couple of the spots. So we're hoping to have plans and we're already planning, thank you, Mr. Coven. We want to fund five more of these in the next three years. So you'll see these at different access points. And it's great being able to work with the city leaders to help us get these put in place because you're providing the infrastructure and the leadership to tell us where's the best place to put these things. So thank you very much. Finally, Oak Island Beach Preservation needs you. We would love to have some more members. We would love to have some more volunteers. And when you volunteer and work with us and become a member, you help us in our, one of our goals of keeping our beaches clean for our citizens and our visitors who come to this place. And if you become a member, guess what? You get some things. We give you some stuff back. So as a member, you could attend our hot dog social. I know this sounds exciting. This will be Saturday, November 4th at 11 o'clock at the Elks Lodge. This is for members. So we would love to have you as a member and we would love to see you at our hot dog social. Thank you all very much and thank people who have helped us during the year. Thank you.
Thank you, Andy.
Thank you for all that beach preservation does. And that's all I had. Sign up. Counsel reports.
I have no report. Thank you.
Mr. Kraft?
Maybe a lot. I went out to the Marshmallows, received a motorized kayak from the Elks Club. So I went out to watch their initial launch and watched Ed Lovett go down Davis Canal in a motorized kayak. Town manager Lisa Rose, some of us went to the Beach Ambassadors end of the year luncheon and sadly said our farewells to Skip Cox, which was a tremendous asset to the town. I want to remind everybody, pledge the pink is, is this month. Try to get, get excited, attend that. Also get excited about the witches ride. That is this month. If you can think of it, Oak Island Angels, they do need contributions, donations. Try to help them. Beach Preservation, they're trying to do great things. Try to help them financially if you can. Lastly, let me say, besides call your mother, let me say, if you get a gut feeling that something's not right, call your dermatologist and get in there real quick. I went in today and instead of saying hello, Mr. Kraft, she said hello, Mr. Kraft. Oh my goodness, what do we need to do? So I have a Band-Aid now. That's all I got.
I don't have anything to add to Sheila. I think she covered everything.
Thank you, Tommy.
Yeah, I have a report this month. I'm excited about, and I hope the community gets excited about it. Matt briefly mentioned in his review that, you know, the town works closely with the Cape Fear RPO Board. And I'm delighted that I am a member of that board. I sit on that board and thoroughly enjoy that appointment. And as he mentioned, that board's goal is to review projects, consider projects, and then they work with the NC DOT to try to move projects to what's called the priority list that Matt mentioned. And it's exciting if you can get a project to the priority list because that means NC DOT will now at least put some effort into taking a look at it. They run it through this methodology they call scoring. So these projects will receive a score and then the NC DOT looks at the score and decides if they're going to fund the project and when they're going to fund it and have the resources for it. So I'm excited to let you guys know that there are three projects that were recently voted on and moved to the priority list by the Cape Fear RPO Board. All three of these projects are related to Oak Island, so I'm excited for them. One project is improvements to beach road specifically for bike lanes, to improve bike lanes and make those better on beach roads. So that's exciting. Even more exciting is our Oak Island Greenway project made it to the priority list. So the Cape Fear RPO Board recognized that we made the effort this year. Thank you, counsel, for putting money in the budget to start the greenway. Our plan is to connect the rec center to town hall as a first segment of that. So now the RPO Board thought that that was marvelous and they voted on it and we're on the priority list. So the NC DOT will give us a score. So we're hoping, keep your fingers crossed, send up prayers. We're hoping for a good score for the Oak Island Greenway. So the NC DOT will, will take that project serious and hopefully add some funding to it. Now, the third project, I'm even more excited about this project because I want to make sure that the community knows that we do listen. That there've been conversations going around for the last probably six months saying that we don't listen, we're ignoring you, we don't care. All of that's not true. And this project, I think, is going to show you that we are listening. So if you recall, earlier this year, there was a, a public hearing around a hotel project. And many people stood up in front of us and said, traffic is an issue, traffic is an issue, traffic is an issue. And Mr. Frazier's not here this evening. I would say hats off to you because he ran his own study. He did his own little traffic study. And yes, Saturdays are a problem for Oak Island during peak season. Why are Saturdays a problem? It's check in and check out for all the rental properties. We know that, right? And so I immediately walked away from that meeting and said, we can do better. We, we can do better managing the traffic flow for Oak Island. Well, what can we do to do it better? So I went to the drawing board, came up with some concepts. I met with the RPO Board. I met with staff, went over some things. And the concept I came up with is to remove the traffic light at Middleton and Oak Island Drive. Yes, you heard me correctly. Remove the traffic light at Middleton and Oak Island Drive. Replace it with a traffic circle or otherwise known as a roundabout. So I am excited to tell you that the third project that made it to the priority list is the Oak Island Traffic Circle at Middleton and Oak Island Drive. I think this is a tremendous effort by the RPO Board and hopefully the NC DOT to recognize that if you keep traffic flowing and not stop at a traffic light, then traffic moves better throughout the island on check in and checkout day. So I'm very excited. I'm also hoping that that project receives a very high score and gets funding because the good news is the four corners of that intersection, the town owns three of the four corners. So there's only one property owner involved in negotiating installing that traffic circle. NC DOT has initially told me that some designs they've looked at may have to relocate that intersection a little bit further north on Middleton, but that's okay because we've got some utilities there on the southeast corner of that intersection that are important to the town and we don't want to have to move, relocate all those utilities. So I'm very excited to announce that we're going to hopefully get consideration for a traffic circle on Oak Island there at Middleton and Oak Island Drive. So I think it would be a marvelous project. I'm really excited about it. And so let's hope for the best on that one as well. That's all I have. Thanks.
Very encouraging. Thank you.
Good work. Thank you very much.
I have a very brief report. You may or may not know the mayors of Bald Head, Bowling Spring Lakes, St. James, Oak Island and Caswell Beach and Southport all meet monthly to talk about projects of shared concern. And we had a very productive meeting for the month of October and are beginning to identify projects that we all can work on together. So we've identified at least a shortlist of three. I'll have details at the November meeting as to how that's going to lay out, but I'm just very excited to be able to work with other mayors across town borders to get some things done of mutual interest. So I'm, I'm very excited about that as well. Committee appointments is Mr. Dubai. Do you want to talk about?
I can address it.
Can you address it?
Yes. Yes. So we have a youth position on the Parks and Rec Advisory Board and it's not been filled as long as I've worked here. We don't really have a prescribed process of how to fill that. And we had an interested volunteer from South Brunswick High School. She is a senior. Her name is Addison Walters. And rather than have her go through the typical application process like we would an adult, that would include putting her contact information in the packet and all of that. We had the, we had her meet with the Parks and Rec Advisory Board and she is very interested in serving on that board. The board is interested in her serving. So they came forward with a recommendation to have her appointed as the youth member. And that is an ex officio, non-voting position.
Do we need to accept her as a member?
Yes, there would be some action to take. Yes. Motion to approve.
I'll make a motion to approve. I'm excited.
I don't have a paper ballot.
I would definitely second that motion though. Good deal.
She's not a voting member, Mark. She doesn't, you don't need a paper ballot, dear.
I just like signing.
You just like to do that. Okay. There you go.
Excellent. I just want to add, I've met this young lady and at her very first meeting, she attended with her, with her mom. And after the meeting, the chair of the committee asked whether this young lady might be interested. And she reeled off half a dozen projects that she was, was wanting to do. And she's raring to go. And just, you, you'd all really enjoy meeting and speaking with her. She's, she's got a lot going on. So thank you for that. Administrative reports. Mr. Kelly?
Yes, Madam. Ms. Willis? She's going to start us off.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I just wanted to give you guys an update on our public art project that you approved me to get started on a couple of months ago. So Monday night and Tuesday morning, we're going to have a series of two public art workshops and inviting all of the public to come out and share their ideas for the Oak Island Public Art Trail. So we're going to have five different activities. Some are very arts and crafts for those that are creative and then also to a survey. So it's open to all skill levels and ages. So it's at 801 Ocean Event Center, again, Monday night, 6:30 to 8:30 and Tuesday morning. And there's a Facebook event, if that's an easy way for you to see. But yeah, we encourage everyone to come out. It's going to be fun.
Thank you very much. That's exciting.
So I have a few public safety items. We've been talking about this for a while. Crosswalks, red lights and those kinds of things. So I tried to put on a few drawings and we'll post this online for everybody in the morning. But it shows everything that we've been working with. The mayor and I have been attending meetings with DOT and their staff and they bring down a different group each time with us to talk to us about different scenarios. But it ends up, the traffic studies show that we're going to have to have red lights at every crosswalk that we have on East Oak Island Drive. So we gave some locations that they were looking at where they told us we had the most traffic at. And it ends up being 40th Street, 46th Street, 51st and 58th. It'll be on another slide. But on this one, I show the one at 40th, the one at 46th and the one at 51st. The one at 51st, NC DOT is going to allow us to use some of their funds to pay for that traffic signal modification there to get the crosswalks in. Then also phase Then also Phase 1 sidewalk, 46 to 54th, NC DOT funds will be used for that as well. We had money in the budget for these two, so we'll be able to put those toward other projects that we have. So Councilman Martin was talking about greenways. So that goes from 46th Street all the way to 31st Street. So now we can apply some of those funds toward that to be able to try to finish that project.
Good job.
Other locations that we have, we talked to them about the beach, crosswalks at the beach. So what we show here is 40th Street and 49th, and then you see the blue X or the blue box there on 46th Street. Going a little more detail about that. We've been working on this one for about two and a half years with DOT to get this approved. Basically, what we're doing is, we're going in, right now, if you've been by there, the handicap parking is basically on the bike path, so the rear end of the cars are on the bike path. So we've been working with them to try to establish a parking lot. We had to go back and forth with KAMA and a few other agencies to get this in there, but the sort of boxed or the rectangle that you see will be the new handicap parking for this access and for the cabana. So then the cul-de-sac, oh, I forgot, Mike got a new point. So the area that you see here, that is a cul-de-sac. And basically, what we've tried to look at, and people's been asking, and we've been listening, for ADA access. So what this is going to be is, people are going to be able to pull in, drop the individual off, then they'll be able to go to the walkway to get to the beach, and then the person can go through that. If they have an ADA placard, they can go park in the parking lot, or then they would go to the parking lot that we have there at Middleton. And then when they need to go back, pick back up the individual, there'll be a little bench and a little area there for them to be sitting in, for them to come back to the cul-de-sac to be able to pick the person back up. So I think it's a good thing, but like I said, it's been a lot of work in progress to get that approved. These are some other areas that you see. The blue circle there in the middle, that's 58th Street. DOT is working up prices for those on us right now to see what they can come back with. Representative Miller and Raven, we're talking with them, trying to get some more DOT money to do some of these projects with. And then the second phase of the sidewalk starts at 58th and goes down to 64th. So that one has not been designed yet. The good news on the first phase, called DOT, and our engineer today sort of brow-beat them a little bit because it has been for almost two years now that we've been working on this as well, and they have told us that we will have a permit for the sidewalks by the end of the month. So we will keep looking every Friday to see if that means the end of this week or the next week, but we are staying on top of that. All the reviews are in. Everything's been completed, all the finales, all the final drawings and everything were actually done in June, and so we're just waiting on a signature on a piece of paper at this moment. Down the bottom, you see a new signal light crosswalk, and the mayor and I sent it through these meetings. We looked at Barbie Boulevard, and we looked at 79th Street. Barbie Boulevard's got that Forest Street sort of intersection, and so when the people would be taking a north or a south turn off at East Oak Island Drive, they'd actually be heading head-on into the middle of the intersection, just the way that everything's laid out. So DOT sort of denied that spot and said we could put it at 79th Street. And if you know, that's where we have the sidewalk on the south side, and then it hops the street and goes to the north side. So they agreed that we could put in a traffic light there with a crosswalk. Then you get to other accesses or crosswalks at the beach, and we started working with them on these. We're getting ready to do an encroachment permit with them, and basically, we're going to lay out the whole beachfront. We're going to ask for probably seven to nine spots. I don't know if we'll do them all at one time, but we want to get them all included in encroachment. So you're looking at the walkway there on 19th. So we would put one there so we could have the access that you have at 20th and 19th come across, people would be able to access the beach. And we probably would go back and look at 9th and 30th as well to add them, to make everything sort of flow from the coast back over across the Davis Canal. Then we get down to the west end, and basically, what we looked at is areas that we could put a few things. And I see now, I didn't put my circle over there. But basically, 57th Street, we were looking at, and then 10th Place West, where we already have the handicap access there, we would look at putting one there so people could park on the other side of the street and be able to come across, because there's only, I think, two parking spots there for the ADA. So we would allow more traffic right there, that access. And then 57th Place West would be the next one. And then further down, 6th and 9th Place, we're looking at extending a sidewalk from there down to the parking lot there at 6th and 9th Street. So that wouldn't need a crosswalk, but we would be having to add a sidewalk to get the people from 6th and 9th down to the access point. And that's all I have for that part. How do I stay here? So we are continuing to work with DOT on some other projects as well. The encroachment agreement, like I said, we're starting on that. DOT has been working with us. The mayor and I had asked to get the lines repainted down Beach Drive, east to west, starting at 58th, going down to Kings Lynn and West Beach. They have found the funds for that, and so they are going through the regional office, Schalode Office, to get the vendor lined up to be able to paint that and house since the season's over. Pickleball courts, this has been sort of a time-consuming thing for Mr. Thornall. Repairs and resurfacing, the contractor, he's been going back and forth with him about two months. They now are finishing a project in Apex and have sort of told him that we're next in line, but we'll be glad to see him, trucks parked here instead of communications. And I know the people at pickleball would appreciate that as well. So hopefully, we'll have him here by the end of October. Bill Smith Park updates. Doll Park is seeing some improvements. We've been meeting with, a group came to the Park and Rec Advisory Board, and then they approached us about some improvements we could do at the Doll Park. So we're looking at bringing in some sand, cleaning off the fence, cleaning a barrier 15 feet away from the fence to try to define where the Doll Park is, bring in some extra benches, pouring a concrete pad at the entrance, sort of clean your paws off coming and going, and some additional signage. We'll be there to remind everybody it's reused water, reclaimed water. Also, we had to relocate the water station back to where it was originally. That's over there near the parking lot in the little covered picnic shelter there where the kayak launch or walkway is. Changing some of the hours to make sure we get the irrigation back in place. 9:00 AM to 7:00 PM every day except for Wednesday, and 9:00 AM to 11:00 AM on Wednesday, the staff will be able to go in there, do the cleanups, contract anybody to spray fleas or whatever kind of maintenance we're having to do at that time will be the time that staff's able to do that. Disc golf, go see some improvements there, too. Public works, they'll be out there pouring impervious concrete to the tee boxes, and some of those will have to be sort of realigned as well, and to look at moving some of the dead trees and branches. Definitely don't want to move anything living because that's part of the golf course, what makes it so unique. Dixie League baseball is coming back to the park, which is very nice. Park and Rec Advisory Board's been working with them on that. So we're going to have all departments out there doing some things. We've got to get the press boxes, fields, bathrooms, concession stand, got to get everything back up and ready to go by February. And that's my report.
Thank you very much. Any questions for Mr. Kelly?
Thank you. Great job.
Thank you very much.
Tremendous information. If I may ask one question. Tremendous information. Thank you, sir. West Oak Island Drive, is that on this particular?
So I forgot that. Sorry. I forgot that one. Scott told me about it the other day. So on the West Oak Island Drive, Scott has a contractor that he's finalizing. We've got his W9 and some of the other paperwork, but we're just finalizing that so he can award that, to get that painted through there as well, all the lines and stuff on the street. So that's coming.
Wonderful. Thank you.
Old business, consideration of a contract for 20th Street crossover repairs. But you?
Forgot, Brian.
I'm good. That's great.
He had no report, so we're good.
Oh, I'm sorry. You had no report.
He has no report. He did Charlie and Sheila.
My apologies.
No worries.
So the town had a contract before with S&amp;C Construction there on 20th Street. They have received a contract with NC DOT for a bridge project. So their priority, they had to go down there and start that work. We had our engineer reach out to them to see about them releasing the contract for us to be able to go out and receive bids to get this job completed. They agreed. They just wanted to make sure we held no regiment to them or anything like that, and we confirmed and sent a letter to them saying, "No, we don't. We'll accept bids from you in the future." But Evans &amp; Son is the document that you have in front of you. It comes in at $243,815. Basically, they would start work in two months. That gives them time to order the materials, and as materials come in, they'll get started. And then they have 90 days to complete it once construction gets started, and then we'll document the start date to make sure we can follow that 90 days. With the bid that we have, we're also going to be re-advertising 9th Street to see if we can get 9th Street done during this timeframe as well. So we've asked a few of the residents there to sort of keep an eye down there on 20th Street to let us know, the contractor does get started, what kind of things that they may see that still need to be addressed or those kind of things, so we can make sure the community's involved in that. And that's my report on that item.
Any questions for Mr. Kelly about the walkover?
The walkover, this new contractor is less expensive than the previous one.
Yes, sir. Times have changed. I mean, before, the materials and everything cost more money, and now we're at a better time.
Good deal.
Got a motion.
So we need a motion to approve the contract?
I make a motion to approve the contract with Evans &amp; Son Contracting in the amount of $243,815 and authorize staff to execute the contract.
Consideration of a resolution affirming Oak Island Town Council's support regarding implementation of a compliant NPDES MS-4 stormwater program.
Yes, ma'am. The town had an inspection done back in, I forgot the date, November? No. Whenever the date was. So during our inspection, they write up things that we need to improve on, things that we're doing right, those kind of things. And then they come back to us and say that we need to modify our stormwater management plan to a template that they have designed. We've already started some of that work that they have laid out, and it's laid out here in the memo, and also lays out the timeframe that we need to make these improvements and calendars and dates that we need to have new items submitted. The town's already done, sent the letter, one of the things, saying we received the letter, so now we sent a letter. We've already done that part. We've already filled out the template for the stormwater maintenance plan and have submitted that back to them for their review. So everything that they've asked us to do, we have done. So they'll be issuing us a permit to continue the program, but at this time, they need us to pass a resolution saying that we're going to do all that.
And the resolution is on page 22, 23.
21.
So we need a motion, well, the actual resolution.
All right. I make a motion to adopt the resolution as presented.
Second. All in favor? Thank you very much. Unanimous.
Thank you.
Consideration of paying off the FEMA gap funding special obligation bond.
And I'm going to turn this over to Ms. Adams.
This item before you is a budget amendment and authorization for us to pay off the PNC loan from 2021 for the FEMA gap funding. We do anticipate getting the FEMA reimbursement this year, and of course, we've made it through hurricane season. So we don't recommend keeping this debt, and we'd like to pay it off and avoid the higher interest rate they will be charging us if we continue it for this year.
Any questions for Ms. Adams?
The only thing I could add, and we've, staff's been working with FEMA and the state to get these things closed out. The last thing we have is the sand management plan to be paid off. We had three other projects approved by the state and FEMA about two weeks ago. Muffin Nickel wrote a letter explaining the sand quantities, placement, and those kind of things. They asked us for that follow-up. So that letter has been drafted, and we'll be sending that to the state to pass on the FEMA, hopefully by the end of the week, and then that'll be our last item, we hope, to close out Matthew and, what was the other name?
Florence.
Florence. Yes, been so long. And so far, we've been pretty good with our replies for the closing, so hopefully, we will get this money back in a timely manner.
So that was going to be my question. Guesstimation of when we would get?
I can't answer that.
You can't guess with FEMA.
No, so they've authorized the payment for the last three that we did a few weeks ago. Usually when they authorize payment, it takes about two months for money to actually be sent to us. So hopefully, December, January, before the next season gets here, we shall have the money, we hope.
But action tonight, how quickly would you be able to pay off the special obligation bond? How much runway do you have for that before we get hit with a higher interest rate?
Tomorrow.
Yeah.
We're going to pay it off immediately.
We're going to tell them, yes, we're going to continue, or we're going to tell them, no, we're closing it out.
Okay.
The deadline is the 15th.
Okay.
And your recommendation is that we close it out? Correct?
And we talked with, remember Doug Carter or the Carter Group came and presented this to y'all? And we've been in contact with them, and that's their recommendation as well.
All right. I make a motion to adopt the budget ordinance amendment as presented to authorize staff to pay off the special obligation.
Unanimous.
Thank you, ma'am.
And there is no closed session this evening per the budget amendment, so I need a motion?
I'm on it. I'll make a motion to adjourn.
We need a second. All in favor?
And I only have one and a half. Thank you very much.
And don't forget the softball game Friday night, 6 o'clock.
That's right. What is it?